This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees, regular meeting Monday, April 1st, 2013. It is 7:30 PM, or I think it's just a little bit after. We are in Riverside Township Hall, Room 4, at 27 Riverside Road. Welcome. Residents and visitors are welcome to all meetings of the village board. Comments and suggestions on any topic are welcome at any regular meeting. Comments may be made during the time identified for public comment on the agenda, or if the comments pertain to an agenda item at the time that item comes up for discussion. Individuals who wish to comment must be recognized by the president and then speak at the podium, and should begin by identifying themselves by name and address so that the village clerk can add this information to the meeting minutes. Please note that while the village code requires two readings of an ordinance, it also provides that the board can waive the second reading and take final action on an ordinance at any time by a vote of the concurrence of the majority of all members then holding office. So, thank you all for being here. Thank you to those who are in attendance with us this evening, to those watching at home on Riverside Cable, Channel 6, and to those who tune in at a later date on the village website, or who pick up the DVD from the Riverside Public Library. So, before we call the roll, let's get one more item of business out of the way here. Today is April 1st. You know what that is? It's April Fool's Day. So, I'm putting everybody on notice. One of your trustees had something up your sleeve here with some kind of phony ordinance or something as in April Fool's. I'm wise to that stuff, so...
I thought you were taking yourself for dinner.
(laughing) April Fool's. Thank you. Now, with that, I will ask the village clerk to please call the roll.
President Gorman.
Here.
Trustee Sussman.
Uh, not here.
Trustee Sal.
Here.
Trustee Reynolds.
Here.
Trustee Shevitz.
Here.
Trustee Mallory.
Here.
Trustee Saji is absent this evening. Village manager, Scolera.
Here.
Village attorney, Lance Molina.
Here.
Village attorney, Michael Mars.
Here.
Officer President, Village Clerk, Kathy Haber.
Thank you. And we have a quorum, so we shall proceed. And with that, I would ask everyone to please rise and join us in a pledge, and I will ask trustee Reynolds to please lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unredoubtable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have one particular presentation this evening, and that is for the General Finance Officers Association to provide the village with recognition for our financial reporting. Please, if you would introduce yourself and proceed.
Thank you. I'm Jim Edsberg. I represent the Government Finance Officers Association, and it's my pleasure tonight to award Ms. Francis with the Certificate of Achievement of Financial Reporting. Jessica did an outstanding job this past year. As you may know, she came here to Riverside shortly after the end of fiscal year. She had to learn the finances and accounting system rather quickly so that she could work with the auditors to complete this arduous task. The, if I may read something here, "The Certificate Achievement Program has been in operation since 1946. The purpose of the program is to encourage and assist governments to prepare financial reports of the highest quality for the benefit of citizens and their parties with a vital interest in government finances. The program has gained widespread recognition as a premier indicator of excellence in governmental accounting and financial reporting." You may wonder why I'm giving this award to Ms. Francis. If you look at the award, it does say "The Village of Riverside" on it. The village has received this award, I believe, for over 25 years. In fact, I believe I was the finance director here 20-plus years ago when the award was given. And actually, I might add that the Street of Bartram is still kind of a wavy concrete street, so it hasn't changed in 20 years.[258.64][258.64](laughing)
It's not going to.
The program regarding the comprehensive annual financial report and the certificate program is an in-depth review of your village's finances by peers, Jessica's peers, as well as the professional staff at the Government Finance Officers. It is used often by the rating agencies, financial advisors, when they look at rating a municipality's financial understanding. They do so because it is a conformity in the way that finances are reported. That's one thing that Ms. Francis had to achieve when she first came here, was to understand the receivables, the liabilities, the fund balances of your finances in order to bestow confidence upon the auditors that the finances were in great shape. So, with that said, I'd like to present Mr. President with his award.
If we can have Jessica, please step up, please enjoy. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's an honor.
It's my pleasure.
And, of course, it is an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. A Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting presented to the Village of Riverside, Illinois, for the Concrivance of Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2011. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
All right. You used to live in Bartram?
No, I drove by that today. I was driving around the community, and it reminded me of what a beautiful community this is. I was mesmerized by the winding streets and the striking architecture. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jessica, thank you.
Thank you.[370.44][370.44](applause)
Is there anyone who cares to address the board at this time? Please.
Alex Gallegos, 3234 South Harlem. Good evening, Miss President, trustees, those in attendance, and to those watching at home. Sir, I come before you in the village board on behalf of the Lions Club. I simply have two reminders. First reminder is that this Sunday will be our annual chicken dinner upstairs at Town Hall on the 7th. It'll be from 11:30 to 5:30. Tickets are available from any Lions member. And the second reminder is that nominations are being accepted from the Chamber of Commerce and Lions Club for Person of the Year. That awards dinner will be in September. The nomination process begins now. Anyone who wants to nominate someone who has volunteered their time over a period towards the community, should contact me at 708-442-5704. And that's all I have for today, sir.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Anybody further at this time?
Good evening, President Gorman, board, attorneys, citizens, residents, and people watching on TV. My name is Deborah Zucksworth. My address is on the screen. I don't know if you can see it. I'm coming before the board this evening. I have some notes here. I reside at 500 Byrd, the corner of Byrd and Long Common. I moved in in October of 2010. I have seven slides, so try and run through them real quickly. Oops, if you could go back to the first one, please. I just have a, this is what the house looked like when I bought it, and this is where I am right now, so I've made a lot of improvements. And I have another one on my calendar, and I can't come to the board for consideration and some assistance with getting village approval. Next slide, please, Mr. Kerrher. Basically, what, this is kind of hard to see, but basically, my project is enclosing a side yard with a fence. I have, I adopted two animal rescue dogs in December, and I work full-time. I live by myself. I work two miles from home. I come home at lunch to attend to the dogs, and the dogs are mid-size, between 45 and 60 pounds, full size, so it's not realistic for me to walk them, and I work at the VA at Heinz. So, I just took four pictures real quick. This is the actual yard that I'm wanting to include from different vantages. My house faces Byrd. I've got two side yards and no rear yard, and like corner houses, the house is real close up to the side yard. So, it's kind of a unique situation. This is looking down from Byrd. There's a flagstone patio here, a tree. I approached Mr. Kerrher about four months ago to see what the fencing code and restrictions were, and I was told recently, I received some correspondence, that I need a fencing variation to do what I'd like to do. So, I just have some pictures to show you. Just requesting to put a fence around this yard, and it's from four different vantages. You can see that there's already existing bushes in three of the four areas. Next slide, please. This is a little, just a hand-drawn thing to give you a better idea. Of course, this is my house. This is Byrd. It's hand-drawn, but this is what I'd like to do, is put a six-foot privacy fence, which is the back of my house, going to the property line, and then the red line enclosing would be a four-foot aluminum-style picket fence with a gate. What I was told from, as far as the interpretation of the code, the problem is that where the red fence, where the red line is, the way the code reads, and some help if I don't interpret it properly, but the code reads that my fence cannot go any more forward than the facade of the adjacent house. So, I can't reach it quite there, but if you can see above bushes, that basically gives me a little run right here. And this house has dogs that they let run at large. I think that having a dog run right here would be inadequate. It's impossible to put in because of the flagstone patio. It wouldn't serve my needs. It might exacerbate the situation with the dogs in the adjacent lot. Next slide, please. So, these are just examples of what I'm looking to do. This is the privacy in the back. This is the fence on the front. Very tasteful, and I wanted to underscore the fact that I'm not looking for privacy on the street side of the house. I'm just looking for a way to be a responsible dog owner and confine my dogs. Next slide, please. I did drive around and found three houses in the Riverside Village that have similar layouts as mine, as far as a corner house and two side yards. This house does have a pool, in full disclosure, but written by the code, this fence does come up more forward than the adjacent house. And that's the exact style of fence that I'm looking to do. Next slide, please. Here's another one, and it's just not real good, but can you guys duck down just so I can read the address? $100 claim?[754.12][754.12](laughing) Sorry. But this house is, you know, we've got curvy roads. This is not as four-square, maybe, as my corner, but this is a corner house, and you can't see right here, but there is a fence that goes up to about here. So, I'm just showing it as an example. It's a side yard, and it does go much further. Can't really tell on it because of the light. And then, next slide, please. Here's another one, 444 Cell Board. Again, you can't see real well, but this is a wooden fence. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
And it is low, and it's right next to the driveway. And then, this picture shows a little bit better that it's more forward than the house next to it. But I think that's my last slide. I'm not sure. Yeah. So, maybe we could sit here for a minute. I don't know if you have any questions. My understanding, I haven't gotten any estimates yet. I do understand that the way the procedure is now, that I have been formally told that I need a fencing variation. I'm asking for some type of relief, absent going to the zoning board, because this is putting in a fence, I'm not gutting out a house or adding square footage. I mean, this might be $3,000, $4,000 total. So, those are my comments.
If I could maybe add further, the drawing in front of it shows you a little clearer, and as the code reads, if you follow a straight line from 526, 522, and 518, where that intersects with the rear yard in Ms. Zucksworth's home is as far forward as she could come legally right now with the fence. I have suggested that perhaps the board may be receptive to referring this to the Plan Commission for consideration. We did something similar for sign, excuse me, for sign variations. It was CBD, and then perhaps corner houses. I don't get a whole lot of questions about them, but in the past year, I've had two others from realtors, from people coming to town and want to know what they can do as far as replacing the bushes and get a fence in, younger families, children's, pets, et cetera. Doesn't come up too often, but it is somewhat unique. So, if the board would be receptive to perhaps asking the Plan Commission to consider what options may be available and/or a modified appeals process, similar to what we did with signs, what I entertained with attorney Mars, where we don't have to do the formal public notice in the newspaper, we don't have to do the certified mailings, and we don't need the verbatim court reporter minutes. Something like that, or there's a consideration for that, would bring the base cost down to hold an appeal session before the ZBA.
Please explain for a second, those who don't know. There is a remedy right now. What is it? There is a process to follow.
The process right now is existing, would be to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The fence code is in the zoning code, and then there's a $1,000 fee to apply for a zoning variation. That is what's existing today.
And the issue here is that this fence encroaches on her front and side yard.
It would be, no, technically, it's her rear yard, Mrs. Zucksworth's rear yard. The red line from up by Byrd to the back is technically her rear yard. The rear yard is opposite the shortest dimension of your two corner side yards. So, you have 50 feet in front and 160, 170 running this way. According to the code, though, that is her rear yard, but it also abuts the street yard of the neighbors up Byrd, as you can see if you carry the imaginary line up. So, technically, she is forbidden by the code to have a fence in her rear yard because it abuts the street yard of her neighbor.
Thank you. There is a remedy. She has remedies. Anybody care to offer any?
Question for our attorneys. So, since there is an existing process in place for the zoning, with the zoning board, I mean, $1,000 is onerous for something like this. So, if we send it to the Plan Commission, what are their options given? Are they constrained by the existing process?
They could recommend, you know, a text amendment that would deal with the situation that might now require the same kind of procedure, variation procedure, or create different rules when you have a double, you know, a double corner lot, double street-facing lot like that for fencing.
And that could be done either keeping it in the zoning code, or, as Bob was mentioning, we could take the fencing provisions and move them into the regular village code, build in a fence variation procedure similar to the way your sign code is set up. The sign code is in the village code, and we have a lesser variation procedure there that doesn't have those same notice requirements and the verbatim transcript.
The sign code, for instance, goes to the Planning Commission. It doesn't go to the ZBA, so it's governed completely differently by their regulations. So, there are all these options available to the Plan Commission.
I would accept Mr. Kerrher's suggestion.
Yeah, I think that's fine with me.
Would the surrounding neighbors be notified?
Absolutely. It would still be by mailing with a fence involved. We'd probably expand it over what's there for, the sign calls for just the adjoining neighbors right now. I would think in a fence situation, we should expand that, but it can be regular, just U.S. postage rather than...
It can be whatever the Plan Commission recommends that it be.
But ultimately, this...
But we decide, yeah. Ultimately, it comes back to us.
Yeah, from back here, for sure.
Hopefully, quickly.
I'm not proud of that.
In this particular case, if it were to proceed to be granted, this would allow the fence along the street yard, along the street there. I don't know what yard you want to call it.
Correct.
So, as you drive down or walk down the street, you now see that fence, right?
Yeah.
Going forward, if this is allowed, you have a fence.
Could you clarify?
The red line along the street. So, I'm just trying to, trying to think beyond your piece of property here, okay? If you came to the ZBA and you pursued this, this would only apply to your piece of property. What is being proposed here is a situation which would apply across the whole village.
Not necessarily. I think what's being proposed is that the Plan Commission take a look at it and decide if either that part of the zoning code needs to be changed, or if there's a more expeditious, which is what I hear us talking about, process for the variation procedure for side yard fences or corner fences, such as the sign.
Right. You could keep the same substance of regulations that you currently have in your zoning code for fencing, but move them over to the general provisions of the village code, which don't have, you figure the zoning variation requirements sort of assume a more substantial kind of change to the lot that usually involves either new construction or an addition of a structure or accessory structure, things like signs and fencing. You could conclude or don't require quite as much of an onerous process of publication, for example, and surveys and so, well, surveying one with the design, but the idea would be that maybe that same level of expense that's required isn't needed in order to fully document a variation request, but it would still be a variation request that would apply only to that lot if you kept the same fencing regulations, but move them to the village code. And then, whichever board made the recommendation, whether you send it to the Plan Commission like you do now with signs, or you can keep this with the ZBA, it would make sense, I guess, to do Plan Commission, given that fences are there, but that would all be discussed, and you'd have a chance to weigh in on it later. It would still only apply, though, to each lot, and they would have to show...
Although, I mean, it is conceivable the Plan Commission could say, wow, this is a hardship, or this needs to be done for all corner lots, and we're going to recommend a change to the ordinance altogether. I mean, that's a possibility, whether or not we want to do that or not. As a board, as ratifying it is a different question, but conceivably, the Plan Commission could, unless we say to them we want...
Yeah, you could direct them.
You could direct, you could direct them, but they could change the ordinance if they chose, or recommend a change in the ordinance on their own.
I was just gonna say, they don't need us to...
Right, right.
I understand the process, seeing if there's a less onerous process or something like this. I would not want to aggregate without a lot more discussion those restrictions. And there's not, there's not street-facing fences very much in this village, and there's a couple that you showed us. I don't have any knowledge of why those are there or what those are. So, I mean, I don't want to give a signal to the Plan Commission or to residents here that start throwing up your fences along the front yards in your houses. I mean, that's not our community. So, the, I see, I can understand, I do think that would be fine to have the Plan Commission look at the process, and if they come back and say, move my fences all over, I can't see that happening. I sure hope not, but one never knows. Anyway, that would be my position. So, I guess we're hearing, unless somebody says something different, to refer this to the Plan Commission, to let them determine whether there is a more, less onerous, a more expedient way to handle fence variations. Is that right, Mr. Lance? That's right? Okay?
That's possible. I have no opinion.
No, no, I mean, if we're giving the correct direction here.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Ms. Zucksworth, thank you. Anybody else care to address the board at this point?
Can you zoom in?
No, we're just referring it to the Plan Commission to look into it, and they will come back to the board. Nobody further, so we shall move on. Reports of the village officers is up next. Village president's report. I have a few things that I wanted to cover in today's meeting, and I wanted to talk a bit about the Forest Preserve District of Cook County Recreation Master Plan. I think that plan should be of interest to everybody who lives in Cook County, and particularly to those such as the Village of Riverside who live among the forest preserves. The, and I will, let me read a few passages from the Recreation Master Plan, which was adopted last month by the Forest Preserve District of Cook County. Forest Reserve District of Cook County unveiled its first official Recreation Master Plan on March 19th. It calls for compatible recreation uses that are sensitive to nature, to natural resources, and emphasize the importance of environmental awareness, open space advocacy, and stewardship. The plan's highlights include recommendations for improving trails, picnic groves, and other traditional recreation areas, as well as adding additional sites and activities throughout the county that will engage new users, promote healthy lifestyles, and connect people to nature. This is sort of an outgrowth of debate that the forest reserve has on a regular basis, and the forest reserves typically are considered passive recreation areas. They're not parks. They're not activity, organized activity areas. The Forest Reserve District is looking to get more people into the forest reserve, so they've adopted this Recreation Master Plan to bring people in through new uses, such as canoeing, dog parks, frisbee, ultimate frisbee-type fields. I think they're talking about going back to some toboggan slides and things like that. So, there are some real exciting things in here. The reason I'm bringing this up particularly for the Village of Riverside is two of the specific highlights have some relevance to us. One of the proposals in this plan, and these are not proposals they will be moving forward with, is Miller Meadow, which is on First Avenue between Surmac and Roosevelt Road. Miller Meadow will be the site of a new off-leash dog area, expanded picnic groves with added group activities such as volleyball and horseshoes, and new fitness and walking trails with possible ties to Loyola Medical Center across the street. I just wanted to comment on the off-leash dog area, which will be set up over there. The group of residents in the village came to the Recreation Commission, I guess about a year and a half ago, maybe almost two years ago at this point, talking about putting a dog park within the Village of Riverside. In lieu of locating within the village, I had a meeting with Forest Reserve District, and this is where we've ended up. And I'll just cut this short. I'll read the note that I sent to the general superintendent of the Forest Reserve District, Arnold Randall, and his planning coordinator, Chris Larry, after this plan was introduced. "I noted with excitement that the just-adopted Forest Reserve District's first official Recreation Master Plan includes funding for an off-leash dog area in Miller Meadow. I want to express my appreciation to both of you for all of your efforts on behalf of the Village of Riverside and the Miller Meadow Dog Park Group to bring this project to the verge of reality. I remember when you met with me at the Riverside Village Hall and listened to my idea for a dog park on forest reserve property in proximity to Riverside. This endeavor is truly a testament to the value of hard work and perseverance." After I met with the Forest Reserve District and they agreed to consider a dog park, the Recreation Commission then took this matter under advisement, had a number of discussions about this under the leadership of the chair, Susan Casey. Susan then, in her individual capacity, but not as a part of the Recreation Commission, then with a group of like-minded individuals in the community surrounding Riverside, formed a dog park stewardship group to advocate for this off-leash dog area, particularly in proximity to Riverside. And because of, first, the work by the Recreation Commission, and then Susan Casey's work along with all the members of the Dog Park Group, they have been successful, and I hope this is something that the residents of the Village of Riverside will be able to take advantage of going forward. There's a second element to this plan, which is also interesting, and the plan says that there is additional funded improvements will include canoe launches on the Displanes River at Evans Field in River Grove. And why is River Grove interested, of interest to us? And that is because this expanded recreation use, canoeing and kayaking on the Displanes River, is made possible because of the Village of Riverside's work with the Army Corps and Illinois Department of National Resources for the removal of the Fairbank and Hoffman Dams. The removal of these dams, along with the Armagedge Dam, which was in, which is in River Grove, the site of this canoe launch that the Forest Reserve District will be putting in. As a result of the removal of those three dams, this has opened up 57 miles of the Displanes River to recreational canoe and kayak use, from the Brandon Road, Locken Dam, and Joliet, north to Dam Ford, just south of Devon Avenue and Park Ridge. Now, this is in addition to whatever launch areas already sit on the Displanes, and there are two in proximity to the Village of Riverside. There are two in the Village of Lions, one in the forest preserve on the corner of First Avenue and Ogden, where, I don't know what the name of that forest preserve is at the moment.
Plank.
Plank Road Forest Reserve. There is a boat launch there. There also is a very small launch that was put in as part of the Hoffman Dam removal work just downstream of the bridge on Berry Point. So, my point is, we've seen a few canoes and kayaks out there. Hopefully, we'll see a lot more, and who's ever out there, they better have their muscles in shape, because they now have 57 miles of uninterrupted access to the river. Next, I wanted to comment, we're talking about the river and Hoffman Dam. I want to take a minute to comment on Hoffman Dam and the Swan Pond Park Project. We just had... We just had some high water a few weeks back, which was probably the first significant river rise that we've had since that work was completed by the Corps and IDNR. It appears that the work is holding up and performing as advertised. I wanted to make the village aware, and we have done this before, but just to refresh all of our memories, the Army Corps and IDNR has a three-year commitment to the Village of Riverside to maintain the quality and character of all the work that they did. For example, we had some concern that some of the rocks upstream from the old Hoffman Dam shifted as a result of the high water. The Corps was out there, along with village manager, Scolera, to look at this, they will be back as the water level drops. The point being, if you folks out there see stuff, and I will particularly thank, as I have before, Mr. Spatney and Mr. Ray, for helping the board and monitoring what's going on out there. If you see stuff you don't like, please call it to one of our attention or to the village manager's attention. There was some water in the Swan Pond Park, that was not from the river, because the restored river wall held up, kept the water out. There'll be time when it won't keep the water out when the water level gets up high enough, but it kept the water out this time. The water that did accumulate there was from rain and natural drainage. When the river level dropped, the culvert with the check valve opened up and released that water out into the river. So, it's working, we will continue to monitor to make sure it works good and even better than it's working now. It's kind of muddy in Swan Pond, and Peter was told by the Corps, that should alleviate once the crop of grass that was planted takes the spring, and once you have more, more growth in there, that'll absorb, absorb the water. So, I want to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on with the pond and with our, with our beautiful river. Anything else that you learned from? And lastly, I will, since it's the time of year that our General Assembly is in session in the state of Illinois, I just wanted to give a brief legislative report, as I have done at these past couple of meetings. The, March 22nd was the deadline for bills to be moved out of House and Senate committees to the floor. If bills weren't moved out by then, they will, in all likelihood, there's exceptions to everything, but they will, in all likelihood, not advance any further. The Illinois Municipal League is the advocate on behalf of municipalities to monitor bills that have adverse impacts on municipalities, hence if it has an adverse impact on us, it has an adverse impact on all of you in the, in the level of services that the village will be able to provide to, to our residents. And the objective of the Illinois Municipal League is to reduce the bills to a manageable number that pass out of committee, and then to monitor them, try to amend bills, to take out onerous provisions and so forth. There's still two months left of this session, so there is a lot of work to be done, so let me just update you, there's pages of things of interest, but three things, and that's pension reform, which we're all interested in where that's going. Separate and dissimilar bills were passed out of both the House and the Senate, they go to the other chamber for consideration, both of these bills were quite different. This will continue to be a subject of consideration by the General Assembly over the next two months. Local Government Distributive Fund, you heard us talk about LGDF, that's your tax money that comes back to your, your income tax money, I think, I just filed my taxes today as a matter of fact. So, that's part of my money that I want to come back to the Village of Riverside. There is a bill that passed out of the House Revenue and Finance Committee to the floor of the House, where it will now be debated, which provides for direct deposit of local income tax revenue into a local government distributive fund for prompt disbursement to cities and counties. What happens now, when your income tax money is collected by a state treasury, it's put into the state's general fund. It then sits there, because the state likes to play with people's float and their timing of the money, and we are, what, three, four months in arrears, four months in arrears on money that is due us. By putting it into a separate fund, it would allow for a more timely payment to villages, number one. Number two, it would also prevent what just happened with sales tax fund. The General Assembly passed the bill, signed by the governor, to borrow, I don't recall the number, to borrow monies from the sales tax fund, and those are the sales taxes that come back to all municipalities. So, they took that money away, okay, and they borrowed it, because they're going to pay it back over the next three years. I hope they do, because all they have to do is pass another piece of legislation saying they're not going to pay it back. Okay? By putting funds into a separate fund, it would permit, it would, it would be a further hurdle to that type of activity taking place. And the last is, there were a number of bills dealing with property tax limitations for tax-cap communities, of which Riverside is and both of our school districts are. Two property tax limitation bills were approved by the House Revenue and Finance Committee on March 21st. These two bills will now advance to the House floor for debate. What these bills do is they prevent tax-cap local governments from collecting sufficient property taxes to keep up with inflationary increases. The limitation provided for in each of these bills would apply to those, will apply to those jurisdictions that experience a decline in assessed property value over the prior year. Sounds like a very, very interesting proposal on its face. If your property value goes down, your taxes shouldn't go up. Kind of makes sense, right? Your property values went down, why should you pay more taxes? If your, if you, if that bill were to go into effect, it would deny local governments the normal tax, tax revenues that we would receive. So, proposal I made to a number of my legislators, our legislators is, you want to pass that bill? Put a provision in there that if you pass that bill and we're not able to collect our full, full tax levy, then we should have the right to reopen all of our contracts, our union contracts, our vendor contracts, to prevent inflationary increases that we no longer have the right to pay, have the money to pay for. They're very serious bills. These are bills that legislators move forward with because it makes them feel good to their residents, to their constituents, I should say, they're not their residents. So, two bills, these are two bills that are going forward, a lot of other ones that are important, but you always hear us talk about municipal revenue. You have any questions, please see one of us or our village manager. So, that concludes my report, and I'll turn to village manager, Scolera.
I'll try to be quick. The first is, I'd like to thank all of those who ride the train day in and day out for your patience during our masonry work at the station. I'm confident that you will appreciate the work once it is completed. It is moving on schedule, and, and we anticipate the work to be wrapped up before the end of the month here. For those of you who have received notice, ComEd has decreased their rate that they charge for electricity from 7.5 cents per kilowatt to 4.6 cents. The decrease, however, does not include their transmission charge, which is an estimate, and their transmission charge, which is estimated to increase 15 to 20 percent from the current charge of .81 cents. Therefore, if you take that into account, our aggregated rate of 4.88 is still below the expected or projected ComEd rate of 5.5. So, I just wanted, in, in the event that you see that advertisement out there, I wanted to reassure the community that the village's aggregate rate is still lower than the ComEd rate. As a follow-up to the board's approval of the refinancing of our bonds, the village has been notified today that we will realize approximately $93,000 in savings over the life of the, of the bonds. That figure does include all of the fees that the village will pay for the refinancing. Thank you to Jessica for her hard work in regards to that. Also wanted to thank all of those who attended the CMAP Open House on March 19th, right here in this room. The plan was on display for all attendees, and they had the opportunity to identify what parts of the plan they liked or disliked by sticking stickers near the various items. The CMAP is in the works of completing the final draft, and, and it will be presented to the board at their April 15th meeting, but if you are interested in reviewing the plan, please visit the village website, where you can access a link to the CMAP website, where the full draft and individual chapters are available for download. And finally, just a reminder to residents that tomorrow's our first landscape waste collection date. We ask that you please place your landscape waste at the curb after 5:00 PM prior to the Tuesday collection date. And that is all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Peter. Village Attorney Report, Lance Molina.
I have to.
Thank you, Lance. Moving on, next item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this evening are the approval of the bills of April 1, 2013. Approved Village Board of Trustees Executive Session Meeting Minutes of March 18, 2013. Approved Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes of March 18, 2013. File and Review Riverside Parks and Recreation Commission Meeting Minutes of February 25, 2013. And also a resolution approving the release of certain executive session minutes of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Riverside. Does any trustee require any of those items to be removed for discussion? Hearing none, then I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So, move. Second.
So, we have a motion by trustee Reynolds and a second by trustee Chevitz. Would you please call the roll, Kathy?
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Sellers.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Baller.
Thank you, and the consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the reports of the board chairpersons, the first, finance personnel and preservation, trustee Saatchi, who is not with us today, so it turned to village manager, Scolera, to cover his item.
Okay. This item is a second reading of an ordinance amending the budget for fiscal year beginning January 1, 2012, and ending December 31, 2012, for various additional expenditures and revenues. This ordinance, before you amends the 2012 budget to include various expenditures and revenue items not previously budgeted, and to adjust previously budgeted items. These include projects that were approved by the village board during 2012 and require a budget amendment. During 2012, the general fund actually spent less than was budgeted, however, some individual departments spent more than previously budgeted. This ordinance amends the annual budget to reflect the changes outlined in the exhibit attached to the ordinance. The auditor is scheduled to present at the May 20th Village Board meeting an overview of our 2012 activity and financial statements. Also at that meeting, the board will be asked to accept the financial statements in the form of a comprehensive annual financial report. With that, you'd need a motion.
So, if, with that, could we, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the ordinance for budget amendment number one.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a motion by trustee Reynolds, a second by trustee Sussman. Is there any discussion on this item, which is a second reading of an ordinance? Hearing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Sellers.
Aye.
Trustee.
Aye.
Trustee Sellers.
Aye.
Thank you, and that ordinance is approved. Do you have anything further, Anna? Thank you, Peter. Public Works Transportation Utilities, trustee Sellers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have a second reading of an ordinance amending the village code of the Village of Riverside relative to private wells. The state of Illinois Department of Natural Resources has for many years discouraged reliance on wells in the areas around Lake Michigan. Use of Lake Michigan water, particularly in communities closer to the lake, has been encouraged to prevent drops in the water table and aquifers in the area. All Riverside residents have access to Lake Michigan water for drinking, irrigation, and other purposes, and use by residents of wells for irrigation or other purposes is not consistent with the goals of maintaining the water table and aquifers for the people who are solely dependent on private wells. Wells also pose health risks through potential cross-contamination of the village's potable water supply. There is no outright prohibition currently on use of wells in Riverside, and the Department of Public Works has therefore proposed this ordinance. The proposed ordinance amends the existing village code provisions mentioning wells to make clear that use of wells is prohibited. No new wells may be created, and existing wells must be kept closed and dormant. So, I move to approve the attached ordinance amending the village code relative to private wells.
Second.
So, a motion by trustee Sellers, a second by trustee Baller. Is there any discussion on this item, which is also a second reading of an ordinance? Hearing none, I would ask, Kathy, please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Sellers.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Chevitz.
Aye.
Thank you, and that ordinance is adopted. Trustee Sellers, anything further? Next, Public Safety, Health, and Landscape, trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be a presentation this evening of an updated landscape master plan developed by the Landscape Advisory Commission. And just to give you a little background, ordinance 1953 of the Riverside Municipal Code establishes guidelines for the composition, terms of office, officers, rules, meetings, and duties of the Landscape Advisory Commission. One of the duties of the Landscape Advisory Commission is to prepare and recommend to the village board a master landscape and planting plan with respect to plantings within the park and parkway system, and plantings within the business districts, and other public lands of this village. Said plan shall contain an overall planting scheme for all park, parkway, and other public planting areas, showing each area's relative context and interrelationship to all other areas which comprise the master plan, defining the soil and moisture characteristics of each area, and suggested planting for each area, and the use and planting arrangement of all such areas, all in accordance with the landscape planting theories, concepts, and principles of Frederick Law Olmsted. On June 2011, then LAC chairman Eric Zuschlag established as a primary objective of the LAC, the creation of a master landscape plan in accordance with the LAC duties outlined in the municipal code. The LAC has been primarily focused on the master landscape plan project since that time. The LAC's major categories of the plan are triangles, parks, and common areas, natural areas, public buildings, and streetscape, and central business district. At the present, the LAC is nearing completion of the street triangle evaluation process, and preparing to begin work on the parks and common areas. So, our purpose this evening is to review the work that they've already completed, and this is going to be a multi-year project, as you can see, from inception to the present day, and I thought it appropriate that, after all the work that was put into this, that this evening, the board and the public and our audience here this evening get a look at all the hard work that they have completed. And let me tell you, this is many, 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 many hours of observation, of looking at GIS plots, of going out and looking at the plantings that are currently in the ground, what was there previously, and comparing that with an idealized version. I would like to introduce Diane Lamontia, who is a chairperson of the LAC, and Diana, if you would be so kind as to introduce the other LAC members that are in the room, and tell us a little bit about what you've been up to.
Let me first, wait, just, we need a microphone up here?
Yeah.
Yeah. We, yeah, I, it is, it is important that we all hear Diane, and not just those in the room here with us. I want Diane, I want everybody at home, all of those thousands of people, and believe me, there, believe me, there, they definitely are thousands over time that listen in, I want to make sure they get to hear this, hear this also.
All right.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, thank you, President Gorman, trustee Reynolds, all trustees, citizens, and I am excited to present to you what we've been working on. We have, our members of the LAC that have joined us this evening are Ms. Gail Sellers, Sue Joseph, Kathy Maloney, and I have to recognize our very able forester, Mike Collins, because he's been a very integral part of this. Also, our public works director, who is not here this evening, Mr. Ed Bailey, has been in on countless meetings and really kept us on track. So, tonight, we would like to convey to you, as trustee Reynolds mentioned, the forward progress that's been made on the creation of a working landscape master plan for the Riverside community. So, again, to reiterate, the official duties of the LAC in short are to prepare and recommend a master landscape and planning plan, to prepare and recommend a list of trees and other plantings in accordance with the master plan, and also to suggest an annual budget outlining the financial needs to carry out that planning. But we do not have a master landscape plan. So, in 2011, I believe, trustee Reynolds, as he said, put forth a challenge to the Landscape Advisory Commission, who was then headed, which was then headed by Eric Zuschlag, to develop this master plan. So, countless hours have been put in, in an enormous team effort to start creating this. The benefits, this is your little April Fool's Fun, so the benefits of our landscape master plan will go to the Village of Riverside Department of Public Works. It will assist them in defining time that they need to allot for certain plantings, among the other countless activities that they have to accomplish. It will preserve Riverside's national landmark status. We are a very rich community in our landscape design by a nationally renowned landscape architect, Frederick Law Olmsted, and we have a great responsibility to continue that. The citizens of Riverside, of course, enjoy a beautiful community that I think everybody recognizes as a very special gem, and the Board of Trustees can utilize this to better prepare their budgets to support the landscape within our community. One of my favorite things is that we will have technology integration. So, we're moving forward, taking all of these documents from papers and big found books, and getting them integrated with our GIS system. We have We have a very robust system that allows us to see what our current tree inventory is, where those trees are located, and where the different needs are within the community. We have divided our challenge up into six categories: triangles, of which there are 48, parks, natural areas, commons, our public building landscape, and the central business district, streetscape. Each of these are unique landscape areas within the community, within the village, and we started with the triangles, and it was a very large undertaking, and I think it was directed very well, and again, we have an extraordinary team that came together, and I'll show you what kind of tools we used to analyze those things. So our methodology for developing the landscape master plan, we had to gather data via visual inspections. So we went out in teams of two with an evaluation sheet, and we did our best to define what was good, what needed improvement, and what were concerns at every single triangle in the village. We recognized that this process will have to be done with a certain frequency of reviewing, and we determined that to be a three-year circle, so that every three years, we have to begin to re-review each of these landscape areas to keep the information current. We used existing written guidelines to define our criteria for evaluation, and the criteria-based worksheets were assigned number values, so that we could extract the information using computer technology, databases, et cetera, to understand what the data we collected means across a budget, across the entire village. So our example triangle is going to be triangle 51, and they're already labeled. We have, as I mentioned, we have a tree inventory. The way that the Department of Public Works understands the village, they label everything. All the triangles are given a T and a number. So T 51 is at Repton and South Coat Roads, and it is directly east of Ames School. As you all know, the Emerald Ash Bore has come to town. It is a very high disease threat. At the time, this was one of the first triangles that we evaluated and tried to understand, and we said, "Well, it's got a high disease threat. We think there might be a problem." Today, all of those ash trees are gone. It's completely leveled, and there were quite a few of them, as you'll see in a, in a map in a minute. Because of our evaluation, we were able to recognize that maybe canopy trees were not the best replacement for those large trees, that we needed some understory to help balance out our landscape. It helps to complete the structure and the visual screening across from one road to the other, which is something that our founding fathers have been trying to re-accomplish and re-accomplish as the different plans have, have gone forward. Even Straka's plan is outdated at this point, so we're really trying to get something that will remain current as time goes on. Another situation that, that this benefited was a Floss donation. The Frederick Law Olmsted Society had a very generous donation that they wanted to make, and they specifically wanted it to go to parks, or triangles, or something outside of the parkways, and we were able to look at, we were about done with our triangle evaluations, and we were able to look at the spreadsheet and clearly identify where our greatest needs were. So we said, "Hey, we need canopy trees in this area, on these triangles, in this section. We need understory trees on these triangles, in this section of town." And the forester and the public works director were able to take the, the money and, and apply it appropriately. We, we really easily determined the tree types needed and the best locations to put those. Summary of landscape evaluations. So again, we had criteria-based worksheets. To the right, you just see a sketch of the, the final category that we added to our worksheets, and it was the aesthetic value. It's not something you need to read in detail, but we have all kinds of information that we've gone to, to get this. We did data gathering via visual inspections, and again, our frequency of review is every three years. So after going through all of the triangles in town, you can see them represented in all kinds of colors on this one extracted map. We can do countless combinations of information. This particular one shows plant layering of the canopy and the understory. So you can see that if it's very poor canopy and very poor layering, both, so it's not, maybe if it's got a strong canopy, but there's poor layering, that's a different problem. So we, you can see that the red triangles have a problem with both, so we really need canopies there, and you could see it as a graphic. So this tool was very useful for our public works director. I thought this was, this was terrific. This particular map shows the disease risk and plant health. So T 51, let's see if I can get my, I can't get it. In the upper left there, it's, it's an orange triangle to the, to the east of Ames School is the one that we're working on. This is a result of our graphic data. So everything that we assessed, so we have, for instance, layering, massing, low invasives, use of natives, low or high disease threat, and anything that's indicated as red on this spreadsheet is the worst situation. So this is, for instance, when we were looking at our spreadsheets, I mean, the spreadsheet goes on and on and on. This is a very, very small, little piece of the data. So it was very easy for us to graphically see where our challenges were. Again, it's easy for our Department of Public Works, for our forester, to identify some hotspots that they need to address when they have the funding and, and the manpower. So our current status in developing this master plan, Phase 1, I'm going to call it, triangles, will be completed in May. We have one month to go. So we are very close to, to taking all of that data, creating a summary, creating our recommendations, and being able to provide it to, to the Board. Phase 2, I believe we're going to address parks next. We have the evaluation criteria gathered. We haven't created the sheet yet to go and evaluate each park. We went and talked to the Parks and Rec Department. We had a specialist come in and, and help us understand what the safety issues were, and again, we've created a spreadsheet that will allow laypeople who are serving on the commission to effectively evaluate these areas in our, in our community. Phase 3 will be the natural areas, and we don't know enough about this currently on the commission, so we're planning informational meetings to obtain reasonable criteria to use and evaluate those, those areas which are primarily along the river. So this is T 51, and this is before the ash trees came down. I can tell you that Mike Collins was able to plant three understory trees in here when those came down, and he, it's got a beautiful, recreated the beautiful western edge of this triangle for the homeowners, as well as the kids on their way to school. So I thank you all for your attention. It was a very brief summary of a great deal of work, and I would like to applaud the Landscape Advisory Commission, because again, they were, they were just unbelievable. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much, Diana. Before you sit down, I would just like to point out that, and I think you could probably see from the data that has been presented here tonight, which is only the tip of the iceberg, how much work and how much effort has gone into this plan, and, and I am so proud of the work that you've done. And I just also want to point out that you're standing on the shoulders of many, many, many people that came before and many other LAC members. Just to mention the Siron Report, the Mahaffey Report, the Cairns Kessler Report, work that Ed Straka did, and John Konka, and everybody before. But you guys have done the lion's share of bringing us up to speed and bringing us into the modern era here, and I know this has been a complete stress situation for many of you to bring this to us this evening. And I think our goal should be to, to, once you've seen what kind of work has been put into this, to have an open discussion about it, and, and by the next meeting perhaps, try to recommend that we adopt the work that you've done on the triangles, because this is going to be an ongoing process, and we would welcome input from any of the trustees that would like to comment on this. And I would also like to have our forester step, step up and just briefly speak to us, Mike, about the GIS system, and how this not only works for the LAC, but for many other areas in the village, but how it's been an effective tool for, for the LAC in this particular instance, and, and what these ultimate reports are going to mean for the Forestry Department and the Public Works Department at all.
Good evening. Mike Collins, Village Forester. In terms of the GIS and the technology that we're applying, it's moving leaps and bounds past the days of driving down a street and doing a windshield survey. There's a lot of aspects to it, you know, mainly some things that are important to me, is being able to get an idea of what your species diversity is out there in terms of tree planting and moving forward. Also, being able to evaluate these trees in terms of whether they're a hazard, or, you know, be able to inspect them or earmark them for inspection. You know, obviously, the photographic, you know, for instance, she was able to go back and pull up a picture where we had a triangle pre Emerald Ash Bore and how those ash trees looked. You know, I didn't have that fortune when I first walked through the door as forester here, especially, I always hear stories about how Dutch Elms disease had such an impact on the community. Those pictures don't really exist, but now, using this inventory and this technology, you know, things are very well documented. I think documentation is a key part moving forward. Obviously, in terms of public works, you know, it'll be a very good tool for my director in terms of budgeting moving forward. There's really countless benefits from this, but the main idea is having some sort of comprehensive overview of the landscape and a plan moving forward, as opposed to flying by the seat of your pants, you know, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Diana, I would entertain any questions from, from the Board, especially and from any public member that's here.
Okay, and I guess before we go forward with that, I realize there is a packet that I handed to each of the trustees. If, if it's better for me to go up front and hold this, because I don't have this electronic format for the citizens to see. Should I, should I move up there? Okay. Thank you. In your packets, you'll see the very first page represents the results of one of the evaluation sheets. So it's ultimately this that we walked out into the field with, and it has different categories: harmony with nature and their rankings, diversity and, and the rankings within the triangle, views, framing, and sightlines, and as I mentioned, we also have an aesthetic category at this point, because we recognized that something was missing after many months of working on these.
How does this thing differ from views, framing, and sightlines?
Well, I think it brings in the total, the totality of the picture, because we can, we can stand it across the street, and we can look through, and we can see the visions of, of the different homes, but then, when you stand back and you just look at the beauty of the triangle itself, it's a little bit of a different thought process. And so I have to give Commissioner Sellers credit on that, because she, I, I recognize that something was missing, and she put it on paper and quantified, made it quantifiable for the people on, on our commission who are not design specialists in their, in their world, and I will, so we, we went out to each triangle with this. This is the tree inventory, and it says, so for instance, I can't identify every tree when I walk out onto, into the field. It's, it's not what I do. So I can look at this, and I see it's a blue ash, it's a half berry, it's a black walnut, it's an American sycamore, and of course, I'm gaining knowledge, and I understand what that means and which ones might be a disease threat. I can recognize that there is a great diversity on this triangle, which is a very good thing in, in defending our trees to, to stay healthy. So as a layperson on the commission, I can be of service to the specialists in our, in our village. This is a flow chart that was done by Commissioner Maloney. She put this forth very early on when Commissioner Zuschlag was still the chair of the Landscape Advisory, and all the way to the left, you can see the different writings, Olmsted, Riverside ordinances. I will add to that, the Mahaffey, the Straka, all of the reports that trustee Reynolds mentioned. We have been referencing those and making sure to include all of their very valuable work and information. You know, and we've been moving forward in a very regular, controlled manner to try and achieve this final report. I don't want to take everybody's time to go through each of those topics.
Diana, I might also point out that this will be a, a record now going forward. I think our forester alluded to the fact that the folks that come after us will have some idea of what our goals were, and then can reference the current state of the growth in a particular triangle.
Absolutely, because these, these evaluation sheets, while they won't be provided to the Board, because there's so much detail, I mean, there's 48 triangles, and there's six parks, and there's countless, the, the natural areas are very vast, and so we wouldn't burden you with that, but we can compile the information to provide it to you in a valuable way, hopefully. So these evaluation forms give that criteria and can be repeated as the people change on the commission in a valuable way. The very last sheet is our landscape master plan proposed table of contents. So this is our outline. This is our, our shell of what we can, what we intend to provide to the Board. Number 5 says landscape guidelines. Triangles is the first letter in that, if you will, and the next one would be its analysis, recommendations, and resource estimates suggested for triangles, and then all of the other information you need to support this. So I thought that was important to show you all. All right.
Any comments from trustees?
I would, I would like to, to thank you and your commission for reaching out to the Recreation Department to make sure that you guys are working in the same, you know, pulling the rope the same way. Often, you know, recreation and can kind of run in different, in different areas, but I appreciate you, you reaching out to them and you guys working together.
Thank you.
I know they appreciate it.
We, we recognize that there was an overlap, and we had a lot of conversations about that, so Commissioner Shalvis and I, she's, she is a specialist, she designs park equipment, and she did a beautiful presentation for the LAC to teach us a few things, and it was nice, because Susan Casey came to us to see what we were talking about, and we opened a lot of doors there, so we were grateful as well. It was very helpful. Thank you.
And as you pointed out, you, you might call yourself a layperson. You guys, you may have started as a layperson, you're not that anymore on the LAC, okay? And each one of you have different levels of expertise, and that's why you're on the LAC. Some had a lot of interest and not so much expertise, and some had real solid expertise. But you're not the professionals. You said what you do is this allows the LAC to interface with our professionals, with the Public Works Department and with our Forestry Department, and, and that's, I think that's key, and is, to Joe's point here, you have to interface with all of the constituencies within the village, and it sure seems that you're doing that. From my perspective, looking at all this, it has two very large benefits, and that's objectivity and transparency. When it comes time to allocate money, whether it's in the Village of Riverside, or for roads for the state of Illinois, or what it is, sometimes it's the, you know, the one who yells the loudest, or the one who knows the most people gets the situ, gets, gets their road fixed. That's not tolerable, tolerable in this time of short resources. This allows objectivity. When there is money available, either from the Board, from a donation, from resident money, this allows objectivity to, to determine where that money should go. And of course, it's transparency, because there it is, take a look at it. Why did you do this triangle and not that triangle? Well, here it is. So I think those are great things for the Village of Riverside. Anybody in the audience care to comment?
Jim, do you have anything further?
No, just my heartfelt thanks and compliments to Chairperson Lamontia and the rest of the LAC, they've been a magnificent job.
Well, and also, you know, obviously, Mike Collins and Ed Bailey have put in a good amount of time.
Yes.
And, and that's our job, but, but they do it because this stuff is who we are. We're a National Historic Landmark community. Why? Because of our landscape. So thank you, and thank you to them. Thank you to Village Manager and his staff. I mean, this doesn't happen without his total support and time commitment to, to this effort, as, as he does to all of our commissions. So thank you to the Village Administration, Peter. Okay? Diana, thank you, and thank you to the members of the commission who came tonight.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have, Jim, do you have anything further?
That's all I have.
Next is River Parks and Recreation, trustee Ballerin.
Just one thing. On behalf of all dog owners in Riverside, I would like to again express our thanks to Chairperson Casey, along with the stewardship for shepherding through the Miller Mark Dog, the Miller Meadows Dog Park Project through the governmental maze of the Cook County Forest Reserve. Their next meeting will be held on April 11, and details of time and location can be found on the Miller Mark, Miller Meadows Dog Park Facebook page, which you can go to and like and... to and like, and sign up for updates. So, I'm sorry Susan couldn't be here tonight to give you all this herself, but it's, it's gonna be a good thing.
Thank you, Joe. I brought up the Recreation Master Plan because of the dog park, because of the rivers and so forth. But, go to your, you're doing your income taxes as we all are. Look, and when you look at your real estate tax papers, line item on there, Cook County Forest Reserve. You're all paying money to the Cook County Forest Reserve. You're paying it to Cook County Administration, Public Safety, mosquito. You're also paying a line item on your tax bill to the Cook County Forest Reserve. That's what Joe's talking about here. This, this dog park is benefiting all of us, and it's because the village stood up and said, "We want to be recognized." So, I, you know, I thank all the people who've done this, so you take advantage of our tax dollars. Thank you, Joe. Next, Building, Planning, and Zoning, Trustee Sussman.
Yes, thank you very much. We happy for us the first reading of a ordinance to approve variations for both maximum lot coverage and maximum impervious surface to allow construction of an attached two-car garage. The applicant submitted a request for two zoning variations. Petitioner is seeking to purchase the property located at 204 Fairbank through a short sale. Petitioner desires to perform a complete rehab of the existing home, and no variation is sought for that. The petitioner also desires to construct a two-car attached garage, garage addition at the rear of the residence, and is seeking relief from both, both the lot coverage and impervious surface requirements, which are a part of our zoning ordinance. The petitioner seeks variations, as I just said, the residential, in the, for the R1A Single Family Residential Zoning District states that lot coverage cannot exceed 30% of the lot. The petitioner is seeking 38%. Furthermore, our ordinance requires that the total impervious surface coverage on such lots not exceed 50%, and the petitioner seeks 62%. At the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, factors discussed included the fact that the lot is irregular in shape, the undersized nature of the lot, which is actually 4,600 square feet in a minimum lot size area of 7,000 square feet, the odd cutout of property at the southeast corner, which also includes an easement to allow for a driveway, the sweep of the front lot line, the location of the existing house on the lot, and the fact that there is non, there is no garage at this point. After hearing the applicant's request, the Zoning Board of Appeals voted four to one in favor of recommending the approval of the building coverage variation, and voted three to two in favor of recommending the impervious surface variation. However, the vote on the impervious surface variation request, well, even though it was three to two, it does not come to the Board of Trustees as a positive recommendation. We needed the concurrent, we needed four voting members to vote affirmatively, and there were not people there to do that. So, the way we have it before us right now is actually one ordinance. As I said, this is just the first reading, and we can proceed as we so desire. Before opening up the conversation, and I believe the petitioners, who keep looking at the sheet of paper are here, but let me, what I'd like to do is go to the finding of facts that was written up following your ZBA meeting, and talk about this very briefly, and then open the discussion up first to the Board of Trustees, and if you gentlemen have anything to add to that, or if anybody in the audience has anything to add to that. So, if you go to Exhibit B, which is the finding of facts, and this is long, and I won't read all of it, I'll just read a portion of it. In the first paragraph, "There is currently no garage on the property. The petitioner is seeking to purchase the property through a short sale, rehabilitate the existing residence, and build a two-car garage." This was in the first part. So, the variations are the lot coverage not to exceed 38%, whereas the current ordinance is for 30%, and impervious surface coverage not to exceed 62%, where the regulation is 50%. If, I was going to go to the very last page, which is where the finding of facts are summarized by Attorney Mars. One, there were differing opinions on, this is the finding of facts, and that means that this is the summary of the conversation that went on at the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the background that explains the votes of the commissioners at that meeting. So, number one, there were differing opinions on whether an undue hardship existed, should the request for variations to allow the construction of a two-car garage not be granted. There was agreement that the hardships, to the extent they existed, were not created by the applicants, but were instead caused by the irregular shape and size of the lot. There was a general agreement that the essential character, the locality, will not be altered, and there were differing opinions on whether unique circumstances, including the various circumstances cited above, supported the granting of the requested variation. And this is important because these criteria, all, all the criteria have to be met in order for a variation to be allowed. So, that is a summary. At this point, we do not need any motion, and we are open for conversation. And again, I'd like to start with any conversation among the trustees. No conversation?
I do have a question. Are you, the tree in the backyard, there's a large tree, that I assume is coming down.
Wait, could you, when you speak, come up there and identify yourself?
Sure.
Because I wanted to get you on TV, too. You're, you guys are dressed real sharp till you get out of there.
My name's Brandon Kurzell. I work with 11 MR LLC. We're the contract purchasers on 204 Fairbank. We rehabilitate homes. As you can see, this is the house, the subject house. It suffered some deferred maintenance over the years, doesn't go with the rest of the neighborhood. These three houses are on the block. This is actually the direct neighbor next door, and this is us. And we were looking at this structure, and there's no garage on the property. And ideally, we'd like to put a two-car garage on the property. But based on the lot size, and there's an easement in here, which is in the paperwork that I believe you guys have gotten, we cannot build this way unless we tear down part of the house, and we don't want to tear down the house. So, our options are to kind of tuck it away in the back. So, to not tear apart this entire house, we requested to go up to 38% as opposed to 30%. And then, the lot coverage, since we have to drive back there, it's gonna, you know, we prefer not to put as much drive, but unfortunately, where we have to position the garage, we have to provide some type of access back there. We've got two options that we have for you guys. One was over the tree, and after discussions, we kind of, I mean, with Riverside, we like all the trees. We've been playing around with it for the last two months to see how we can position it to not have to take down that tree. Although, at the last meeting, I know our neighborhood would like us to take it down, but we'd like to preserve the overall, general, you know, way of the neighborhood. So, we've kind of brought it over to the right, and based off the setbacks, we may have to angle it just a little bit in here, so that we don't disturb the tree.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at the, I walked back there, the tree is 17 feet off the back of the house. And in order to, I mean, to do 24 feet from that side of that, from the tree, I mean, you have to give the tree some room.
Yeah.
I don't see how, how you would be able to turn a car in and out of a driveway. Because, and I know that easement, because the, the, the paint was in the driveway, right down the middle of the driveway. Have you thought of putting a tandem on the side of the house?
Yeah, you know, we've thought about it, and that's why we've, can I show you another thing that we didn't include since we first took this in? We've actually, right. On what we've got there, we would be able to save the tree, you know, and keep it there.
I have some questions for you, please. I, in the package that you submitted, I just have some clarifications for, for board members. For instance, in the, in the package that you submitted, well, I understand that many homes in Riverside and in the First Division have a two-car garage, many homes do not. And in fact, you make the statement in your petition that all the homes in the First Division have two-car garages, but they, they really don't. In fact, there are many homes in that area that do not have a two-car garage. And one reason that I bring this up is that my understanding from reading the, the write-up from the, the meeting is that in fact, you could put a one-and-a-half car garage in the back, or a car, I believe it's 20 by 20, was that it? And you would not need a variation. And I also walked and looked at it also, and saw the numbers, the number of square feet that would be remaining if this variation were to be granted. It would be a very small backyard. And I have some concerns about that, for instance, and I also have concerns about the impermeable surface. Well, let me go back and say that, that your request to build to 38% versus 30% is really about over a 25% increase over what's permissible right now. And it was 10 years ago, eight years ago, that this village decided to actually reduce the amount of land that can be built on. So, I do want to point out for trustees and for other people listening, that that is a very, very large increase. And then, the second concern I have has to do with the permeable surface or the impermeable surface issue that you're asking for. You're asking to go from 50% to 62% for a garage in an area that does flood, and in a part of town, I guess all parts of town get overly saturated, right? I think we all know that by now. And even though I see in your write-up a discussion about, about mitigating some of that through some pavers, or some of the new concrete that's out there, I do not see that as a part of what you're going to do, because you state it's a possibility, but your request is for a 62% permeable surface. And I will go out in front of my fellow trustees and say right now that I am opposed to increasing permeable surfaces. I'm not opposed to mitigating it through, through substances, or through construction materials that allow for the water to seep into the ground, but I am opposed to such a huge increase in an area of town that has flooding problems. And I'm very much opposed, I saw in your statement that the runoff could be handled by our sewer systems, and in fact, we do not like runoffs to be handled by sewer systems. And is it against code, actually?
Pretty much assured that as much as we like to handle runoff, it can be handled by sewer systems.
It cannot. So, as my fellow trustees were quiet initially, I am not a particularly quiet person, and I, that is my point of view on that at this point.
My understanding is that you're not the current owner of the property, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the sale is contingent upon the fact that if you don't get this variation, you won't purchase the property, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and what attracted you to it initially?
Actually, my father lives in Riverside. I love his town, and just driving up and down, I mean, I look for dilapidated homes. I think this is one of the, you know, gateways in Riverside, if you will, right over by the, well, what used to be the dam. Now that they've taken it down right here, it's just an eyesore. And I like to rebalance things. I just, you know, like things to be fresh and, you know, not dilapidated.
I live in one of the houses in the First Subdivision that has a one-car, very tiny one-car garage built in the 1920s. I can't expand the building there because of the various reasons that we've set up in our code. And I think it preserves a certain look and a certain environmental footprint that we don't want to expand in Riverside. And so, I would agree with Trustee Sussman. I don't think it's something I would like to see, Doc.
You know, we, just, there's a larger point here, too. So, this is an irregular lot. We just heard from the woman who lives on Bird who lives in an irregular lot, right? And two meetings ago, we talked, or three, three meetings ago, we talked about a variance for another property that was an irregular lot. And, you know, it somewhat, and we've seen that used in the definition of hardship or substantiate hardship three times now. You know, do we have, I mean, how many regular lots do we have? I mean, there, I mean, I don't mean to be a partisan, facetious, but, you know, we, we all know Riverside. We, we have a bunch of irregular lots. We have a bunch of weird streets by, you know, planning standards, and not straight, and they don't make these nice right angles that make a lot a regular lot. So, you know, to, to use the, the irregular lot argument in terms of to determine hardship, it doesn't necessarily hold a sway with me, but it does raise an issue of, is, you know, I guess it tends over the attorneys, is, is regular lot size, and they can substantiate hardship?
Which is, it's just one factor.
Yeah, I mean, it's
I mean, one of the things, hardship is also, what's a reasonable use of the lot? So, that's why I think it got into how many two-car garages are there, is that at least, you know?
Right. Well, obviously, it was reasonable if there's been a house there for some, some amount of years, some decades, but.
I would agree that it's not unique, the, if that's what you mean, Mark, the use of irregular lots.
Yeah, absolutely, too. And it's just a larger point I have to make. And I don't know if that merits further discussion in terms of how we determine hardship, but maybe not in this case.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. And this goes to one point Trustee Sussman made. Brandon, on page 21 of the transcript, Mr. Zen Kurzil said that if you were to shrink that garage, and this is the discussion about going from a two-car garage to something smaller, one-and-a-half car garage, one-car garage. If you were to shrink that garage, that issue would go away, and that issue meaning the very need for variance. Trustee Sussman also commented on, on this. Well, here's the words that were stated at the ZBA meeting. Is that, is that right? If you put in a one-car or one-and-a-half car garage, you don't need a variance? Because if that's the case, I think, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't, I find it hard time being persuaded.
Sure.
Because I felt, I think you did yourself a disservice in your papers by stating numerous times that every house in the First Division has two-car garage. That's clearly not the case. You said that in your petition, it was stated in your transcripts, it was stated at the meeting. You have houses on that very block which have one-car garages. And, you know, the character of the village is fine, those residents obviously are fine. If, you know, nobody's to say you don't, you know, if you want a three-car garage, and, you know, all kinds of things going on, you know, maybe Riverside is not a good place for that type of desire. So, but I'm saying, I, I, it seems that you're saying you can accomplish what you want with a smaller garage.
We would prefer a two-car garage. We don't think it would change too much of the characteristic of the neighborhood. It's, it's, you know.
Okay. But you can, you, you do have the footprint to handle a smaller garage?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'd just like to reiterate something I said that President Gorman said. I think you also, and I think I said this, did yourself a disservice by not saying that you could reduce the permeable surface issue by, in your plan, by putting in other kinds of material. In fact, you're asking for the 62%, and you do say that it could perhaps be reduced, but that's not what you're saying you're gonna do.
Well.
So, it's very difficult for me to say, "Well, 62% is okay, because he thinks he might be able to reduce it." I can't vote that way. So, I think you also did yourself a disservice by, by perhaps not coming forward with a fuller plan.
Okay. I, I understand, you know, when we're going through, this is kind of a, a quick thing. We didn't want to throw, you know, we, we don't own the property currently, so we just can't be coming up with these grant schematics as of yet. You know, ideally, I just took a 24 by 24 foot footprint, you know, and added it on there to try and.
But you can understand, we can respond to you by saying, at least I personally cannot vote for something because, because you, you didn't want to invest in a plan. You know, it's.
Well, and it is, it is truly to your credit to proceed in the manner in which you did. You did not buy the property, and then come into the village with your hat in your hand and say, "I own a piece of property and I can't use it." I mean, thank you for doing it this way.
You're right, thank you.
Yes, one second. Is there any, any other comments? Is there any other comments, someone from the audience would like to speak, any other comments at this point? We can come back to it. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is-
Please.
Okay. I wasn't actually planning on making a comment, but-
Well, that's why you come to these meetings spontaneity.
This is fascinating. Exactly. My name is Sue Joseph, I live at 292 Fairbank Road, somewhat up the street from you. I only have one comment to make about the garage size. My house is a farmhouse, sort of, you know, a traditional farmhouse style, on a decent-sized lot, but the former owners chose to build a one and a half car garage. Because of that, most people own two cars, we do. I can't get two cars into the garage, and most of the time, both of our garages, our cars are outside of the garage in the driveway. I don't like the way that looks in Riverside, yet I'm bound by the fact that it is just a one and a half car garage. So my preference, but I haven't looked at your individual piece of property, I know exactly the house you mean, it's rather an eyesore in the neighborhood, it's been vacant for a long time, I don't know if it's an attractive nuisance, and I didn't intend to come to argue your case by any means, I don't know all of the details. Just the garage issue, my sense of it in many cases is that a one and a half car garage doesn't house the usual two cars that most people own. Thus, we end up with cars in the driveway. I hated at my house that we have cars in the driveway, it doesn't look good. Just my, just my comment on that.
Thank you.
On a strict, on a totally anecdotal observation on that comment, I bought my house with a two-car garage, and I'll sell it with a two-car garage. But I tell you, there ain't no way you're getting two cars in that garage, because these are old houses, I got a house built in 1920. So my point is, I don't care if you got two or three-car garage, you fill it up with all kinds of things, bicycles and barrels and all kinds of things. And cars no longer are made of steel, they don't rust. My parents and my wife's parents, oh my goodness, their car must be in the garage. Cars are different. And I do appreciate what Sue Joseph just said about the aesthetic of it, but then it goes to Jim who brought up aesthetics also, so it's, not, these aren't easy.
No, they're not easy.
Yes.
My name is Zenon Kurzio, and I am a, excuse me, a resident of Riverside, I live at 274 South, and I've been there for approximately 10 years. So I'm speaking to you as not an outside investor, developer, architect, but I'm also very concerned with this community. And I've been, by the way, I need to say this, that I'm so privileged and happy to hear all the work that's happening with the parks and everything else, it's refreshing, I'm glad I'm here today, unfortunately for the wrong thing. I'd like to point out a few things. I, too, when I purchased my house, it has a one-car garage. And life changes as you grow. The kids eventually wound up getting cars, my driveway started to get choked up, I had three cars lined up. It's not pleasant, I'm embarrassed to see all the cars lined up, I really believed that it should be tucked away, put off the street so they're not visible and lined up, creating a visual, you know, distraction to people driving through. It's a lot more aesthetic if you could put the car out of the way. But what I really want to address is, and I take your comment very wisely about the permeable, impermeable. One thing that, since we haven't really sat down and developed actual plans to give you, you know, square footages, what I need to point out is that there is an existing driveway that's there. It's asphalt covered, it's in a triangular area, and it terminates at the back of the house as it is right now. So if you look at that little diagram, we're literally adding about 30, 40 square feet at the most. Unfortunately, because of the existing condition of the driveway that's there, it makes it sound like we're looking to put a lot more impermeable area, and we are very much willing to put pavers, which gives us a reduction, allows some of the water to actually permeate into the, into the ground and not cause any problems with the drainage system in Riverside.
And I think that's what Gene's point is. If the plan would have said, we're going to put pavers here, we're going to do this, we're going to put the garage here, we're going to handle the runoff this way. You know, I would say I'm fairly liberal when it comes to some of these variations. If it's good for the community, it's good for the house, I'm in. But I think what you're, what you're asking for is a blank check, which I'm not in for a blank check.
Sure.
I think with a little bit more, a little bit more time and a little bit more effort and a little bit more money, this plan could have, could have moved a little, you know, a little better forward. But to show me a survey with a square flipped in three different areas and me walking the property, that backyard is, the house right behind you probably is not much bigger than the same lot that you're at. The house on the corner, not this exact corner, but the one here, probably doesn't have much more of a backyard than you have. You would have to move the electrical, because the electrical would go right through the garage. There's electrical that goes to that sidehouse that hangs right over the, and that would have to be moved and figured out where that's going to go. I mean, there's, I think there's a lot of planning issues that need to be, that should have, that could be done, that should have been done, that would have made this move forward a little bit faster. But I understand you don't want to invest in the property without, without having, you know, the variations, but, you know, you can't, I can't faithfully give a blank check to a developer and just say, you know, go with it.
And I think we're all, I can't speak for everybody, but I do think everybody on this board is concerned about homes that are in disrepair and extreme states of disrepair. But, but we still can't say we're willing to do anything as a community to take care of that. It has to be something that we can understand and make sense for the community.
And I fully understand what you're saying. I think if there's one thing that, if there's any regrets on my part at this point in the development team, is not having more concrete-specific things, but when you're looking at an investment trying to simultaneously take inhaling property, let's leave it at that, because it's in severe need of rework, and it's not just putting up a garage and selling it, the whole entire building will be redesigned, new facade, the second floor is to be taken off and rebuilt again. It's a matter of what is available, what will the market bear? If, in other words, we couldn't get a garage or a two-car garage, which will be, feels the most marketable point, it kind of doesn't make sense to jump into it. So I hear you loud and clear, I think I'll discuss this with the development team, whether they want to pursue this further and come back with a more concrete plan, if that's something that could be permitted by the E.
Sure, I mean, yeah, you can do whatever you like. We do, did you, sir, you were raising your hand, too, I'm sorry, are there any other comments?
I have a few questions, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Ken Evans, I work for Village Realty in Riverside, we have the listing on that property. Okay, that property's been on the market for almost three years, okay? I had it rented for a while, but the people were pigs in there and everything else, okay? People were complaining about, everybody was sitting outside and everything else. I go to it today, it looks like somebody was trying to get in the back door, it was partially open. You know, vagrants, there's a lot of people fishing around there, you know, stuff like that. And I've been taking care of this house, the lot, I cut the grass and everything else. One thing about the permeable, you know, what you're talking about, wasn't the dam supposed to alleviate some of that?
No.
No? Well, that side there, I don't think that thing's ever flooded over there.
The backyard's there, yes, that's right.
The back lot, right there?
Yeah, and, yeah, and our sewer systems really, by code even, can't handle more. So when I saw that, I kind of sat up, I did sit up straight. There are, we, as a village, we have now a engineering firm with hydro, what are they called, with water engineers who can serve as consultants as we need them. We have residents in town because of flooding issues that are-
Couldn't they take the drainage and, you know, like, daughters and everything else and kind of divert it out?
No, because I think what happens in one yard affects neighbors' yards as well, and I think that's what we're experiencing. We're finding that there, there's a lot of flooding in backyards that's going on.
I've seen some other ones downriver banks like this, I can't remember, there's a little further, I think it's west of there, but, or west-south, I think, yeah. And they have like a drive-through garage, and there's a three-car garage in the back, and there's hardly any property back there, so I don't know how they got it through. It's right near Berry Point, when you're coming out there a little bit, when you go down, instead of, when you come over the dam, you turn right down Fairbanks. But, you know, I don't know how they got it through, yeah. I don't know the address, but anyway, you're starting to, when's the last time you built a two-car garage, I mean, a one-car garage in Riverside? The 50s or, I mean, have people actually built one-car garages? Everybody wants a two-car garage now, right? Just like all these houses, they got small closets, everybody wants a big closet, right? So people like two-car garages so they can park their cars.
You were talking about the differences between what people want and what are codes at?
Yeah, but codes, you buy a house-
But we have a code for a reason, the code's not-
You buy a house and it's not yours, you can't do nothing, you got all these codes.
I understand where you're coming from.
I serve the service myself.
Well, this is also a function of the lot size. If this were a bigger lot, this would not be different.
Well, I have no law, they put, a garage is a smaller, smaller size than that.
We have to go by something, and the code is-
And how about the one on the corner, there's a three-car garage right next to it.
Please, wait, if you'd like to, if you'd like to speak, I'll recognize you, I have no problem.
Just sit down. I'm just trying to stay, you know, what are we talking about, from a 24 garage to a 24? What if they give them a 22? Will that work, or, you know what I'm saying, some type of a two-car garage that could be put on there?
I think a two-car tandem garage would work on that property. A two-car tandem garage would work on that property without, with the-
I don't know about that, would they have to have it in the driveway, right?
You would have to have it in the driveway.
We're not really here to discuss-
I'm not an architect, but there's no-
I'll tell you what, that defeats the purpose, because you still got to pull your car-
Well, we're not here to discuss the design, redesigning your, you know, I, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
And like, if paper bricks work, and that for you, for the progress part, that's fine, you know? Because it looks like you guys are going to shoot it down.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Nancy Malanson, I live at 208 Fairbank, the Blue House here. In regard to the flooding, we have never, ever, I've been there 39 years, we have never flooded. Up the street, we've done sandbagging and everything, we're not even in the flood zone. So, so the flooding is not a concern.
I think what trustee Sussman was referring to was not flooding from the river, but flooding from just runoff and rain. I'm not in a flood plain either. And my house-
I've been there 39 years.
My house is underwater in the back when it rains. I think she was not talking about river flooding.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also am a big walker, I walk the whole perimeter almost every day, except for in the dead winter. I would say that most of the houses, I can only think of one on our street that does not have a two-car garage. So the majority of homes, I agree with you, have two-car garages. All the way around the perimeter, I go the whole perimeter.
But the lots narrow down as you approach the corner. This is a small lot size, it doesn't fit-
It's not smaller than ours.
Doesn't fit our code.
Yours is seven, is 4,000 square feet?
I don't know, big ours is-
Yours is, yeah, I think yours is-
I cut my backyard with a push mower in five minutes.
Maybe Mr. Carer knows, but between Berry Point and Cooley, Conley? Cooney?
Cooney, yes.
There are four single fan, there are four one-car garages.
Berry Point?
Which is your block, on behind-
No, I'm on Fairbank.
On Fair, Fairbank, your block, Fairbank, between Berry Point and Cooley.
Cooney.
Cooney. I only lived for 39 years, I mean, okay, there are four one-car garages. Behind you, okay, which is Millbridge, from Berry Point, just around the corner behind you, there are four one-car garages. It was a sunny day today, by the way, okay? So I don't think we need to get into that, but you did make the statement, so let's make, let's clarify that. Anybody else that you care to speak, ma'am? No? Trustee Sussman, let me jump back to you.
Yeah, I think we, as I said, that when there's an ordinance, when there's an ordinance before us and when there is our positive recommendations from the zoning board of appeals, then typically this is the first reading. I would just actually, given the discussion today and your understanding of the discussion today, I'd just like to, I'd like to go out on a limb, I guess, or maybe I should poll my further, my fellow trustees, I don't see a lot of will to grant these two variations. And I would like to move, then, my understanding is that if we move to deny the variations, I can do that tonight as, during this discussion, and then not ask these people to come back in two weeks and have the same discussion if we have a sense of where this is going. Boy, this is a hard one for me to talk about. But anyway, I'd like to move that we deny the proposed ordinance, the two variations, which for this-
It would be to deny the proposed variations.
To deny the proposed variations.
Because actually, to make the variations, to allow them, requires an ordinance because they're currently banned by ordinance that are in existence.
So we did nothing.
Exactly. And so the only reason the ordinance is on your agenda in the first place is because Michael Mars wanted to make sure that if there was a desire to go forward, you didn't have to have it on three meetings' agendas. Because if there was no ordinance before you because of your second reading requirement, you would have then said, okay, we want to adopt this, we want to go forward and make this change. So then we would do the ordinance, then you'd have yet another time unless you waived the reading. So this way, it gives you the greatest freedom to move as efficiently as possible through your procedures. But the denial requires no action other than to vote to deny on a motion, there needs to be no ordinance.
So I have a motion by trustee Sussman to deny these two variations.
Second.
Second by trustee Shevitz, is there any further discussion?
I gotta tell you, we, and I agree with what you're saying, but I think we've told these gentlemen what we expect of them, and I think it's only fair for us to allow them to come back to the board with a plan that has permeable pavers or concrete, or this, this new garage that he has here takes a chunk out of the house, I don't even know how this will, could work, but it cuts down the coverage. We've told them what we look expect of them, we told them what we're not going to allow. I think we at least owe them the opportunity to come back to us and say, this is what we, this, you know, if we're going to go ahead with this, this is our plan.
I think they need to go back to the ZBA, not to us.
They have certain ordinance required.
And I, and I do not-
The ZBA's already approved it.
Well, it's okay, it's still a variation procedure, it's a request for a different variation. And I also think we cannot make any guarantees until we see a plan.
I tell you, I agree with you, 100%.
Okay, I misunderstood you, but I do think, well, do we want to vote and then come back to this discussion? Because I think it is an important-
Well, Joe's question is, where does, where do they go next?
I think they do go back to the ZBA.
My point is, my logic is they have to go back to ZBA, they're not going to come back to this board, and we're not going to review plans in the first instance, that's the role of the ZBA. We've given them direction, they may not like it, they're like it, but they got direction, and it's for them to follow the process, which is go back to ZBA.
And if they go back to the ZBA, do they have to pay the same charge over again?
I don't think they should, that's my opinion, I don't think there should be any additional charge for that. Where's Mr. Carer? Yeah, I-
I'm going to go as one of the attorneys.
Okay, I don't, I would like to ask that we waive the charge if they, if they choose to go back.
Those things can be waived, whether we would need to bring that forward, but they could be, they can be waived. The one issue would be, it really depends on how much homework they really did, and that's not for this board to know unless it's revealed. If they, if they looked at all the options and this is a do or die thing, then the deal won't go through, and it's that simple. But if they haven't, they may go back to the drawing board, and they may decide to go forward and try to do something with pavers and no variation, and then that's the answer. Or they may work it and then decide, look, we've tried it every which way, but we would like to try to save this deal, we're asking now for a lot less because of whatever factors there are, and then they would approach the village and, you know, they-
But that's not for us to decide, that's for the petitioners to decide.
Right.
That's all we're saying.
It's a little premature, I think, I guess.
Right, we don't even have a vote yet.
So the motion by trustee Sussman would be conditioned on the fact that if they go back to the ZBA, the fee would be waived.
Oh, is that what we're doing, we're asking for a friendly amendment, is that?
Well, that's what I'm, that's-
Does that need to be a part, should that be a part of it?
Well, I think if we're going to deny, we should, we have to-
No, you can, I mean, sort of the understanding would be that you'd get significantly less than what you've got, but I think they got the message, so that would be fine, right?
Okay, so that your motion?
Yes, that we deny-
So a motion by trustee Sussman.
Can somebody repeat Catholic?
Just like I used to-
Hold on, hold on.
The motion to deny both-
Proposed variation as presented tonight.
Correct. With the understanding that if they choose to proceed back through the ZBA, the fee is waived.
With a different, with a different variation.
Different. Okay, is that okay? And if there's any further discussion, thank you for, thank you for bearing all of our questions and discussion and debate. If you would please call a roll.
Okay, so we have a motion by Sussman and a second by Shevitz.
Yes.
Okay, trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Suss-
Aye.
Trustee Rump?
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz?
Aye.